Ready?
I don't know.
We're still not on?
Yeah. Brandon, do you know that we're not seeing anything? Yeah, the master switch.
Yeah, here we go.
Oh, look at there. Wow, don't we look good? You know, we don't know how to turn the TVs on, Russ. Sorry, I made that clear.
Okay, welcome to the special meeting and budget hearing for Morganton City Council, June the sixteenth, twenty twenty five. Our first order of business is a public hearing and consideration of the city of Morganton's budget for fiscal year twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six. Sally, you want to bring us an update?
I will. So at our June second meeting, we went over the budget in considerable detail. And the budget before you tonight includes leaving our tax rate at fifty cents for regular taxes, fifty cents per hundred dollars, twelve cents for downtown tax district per hundred dollars in value. Electric rates remaining the same, water rate increase of ten percent, sewer rate increase of five percent both on volume charges, and a five dollar per month charge increase in January for Compass, for the TV portion. And everything else remains the same, other than the things that we talked about.
This is a public hearing. Has anyone wished to speak for or against the budget? Seeing no one approach. Public hearing is now closed. What's the wish of council?
Make a motion to adopt a budget ordinance for fiscal year twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Thank you, Chris. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Motion passes. Okay. Next, I believe, is consideration of adopting schedules and fees. Sally?
Yes, so those are the schedule of fees and charges that make up the budget, but we have to do a separate item to approve those.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to adopt the schedule of fees and charges for fiscal year twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six.
Thank you, Chris. Have a motion to have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Butch. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. The motion passes. Sally, next, I believe, are pay ranges?
Yes, so you all have to set the pay ranges for the new year, and the pay ranges include the three percent COLA that is approved with this budget.
What's the wish of council?
Motion to approve pay ranges effective July first, twenty twenty five.
Thank you, Wendy. I have a motion to have a second. Thank you, Chris. Both of you. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Motion passes. Next would be pay ranges. Public hearing consideration for the community block grant, which is CDBG entitlement for fiscal year twenty five, twenty six. Okay, a public hearing is now open for consideration for the CDBG entitlement for twenty five, twenty six. Anyone like to speak?
This is actually twenty five to twenty nine. This is the five-year action plan, and Jennifer is here to talk very briefly in summary about that.
Thank you, Jennifer.
Good evening. So I'm just going to go over a couple of quick things with the plan. So this is the second of two required public hearings required for us to submit the twenty twenty five through twenty twenty nine consolidated plan and the twenty twenty five action plan, which is included in that, which will be separated too, for the use of the CDBG funds. Some of the funds that we will be using will be going to the normal things such as the small business, grants to nonprofits, public facilities and infrastructure, and some admin. So, and the consolidated plan kind of looks over the five years to see what the city wants to do in those areas.
And you have in your notice in those and in the five-year plan, you know, looking at the same things that we've been supporting again with the small businesses, some nuisance abatement opportunities, and then the public infrastructures, sidewalks, storm drain repairs, stuff like that, that happens in our CDBG eligible census tracts.
Yeah, eligible activities.
Okay, this is a public hearing. Anybody else who'd like to speak for or against the consolidated plan for twenty five, twenty nine?
And we only do that one every five years.
Okay. Public hearing is now closed. What's the wish of council?
Make a motion to approve twenty five, twenty twenty five to twenty twenty nine consolidated plan as presented.
Thank you, Butch. I have a motion to have a second. Thank you, Wendy. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Motion passes. Next is a motion to, well, a motion to approve the twenty five, twenty six action plan. Jennifer?
Okay, so we were awarded two thousand one hundred twelve dollars and two twelve, two thousand one hundred twelve dollars and four hundred seventy. So, and then we're anticipating the program income, the normal about thirty thousand, give or take, for a total of two hundred forty two thousand four hundred seventy. And we proposed the same projects, the small business, ninety thousand, grants to nonprofits, thirty thousand, public facilities and improvements, seventy nine thousand nine hundred seventy six, and the admin would be forty two thousand four ninety four, for a total of the two forty two four seven.
Let me do this correctly. Open up the public hearing. Jennifer, thank you for that explanation. Anyone like to speak for or against this action plan for twenty five, twenty six? If not, public hearing is now closed. What's the wish of council?
Make a motion to approve the twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six action plan as presented.
Thank you, Chris. I have a motion to have a second. Thank you, Chris. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. The motion passes.
And I will say the grants to nonprofits and the small business ones, as you know, are very popular.
We've already had some calls here past week asking about the, so very popular, very well done.
Yeah. Along with the plan, we also need you all to consider adopting the project budget ordinance, which sets up that one-year budget for us.
And that's the next thing on our agenda? That's not a public hearing, that's a motion just to take the project, right?
Correct.
What's the wish of council?
I'll make a motion to adopt the CDBG twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six project budget ordinance.
Thank you, Chris. I have a motion to have a second. Thank you, Wendy. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Motion passes.
And then we need one more item dealing with the same thing, which is our contract with Western Piedmont Cog to administer that effective July one.
Okay, that is an administrative agreement. What's the wish of council?
Make a motion to approve an agreement with the Western Piedmont Council of Governments to administer the CDBG entitlement program for the fiscal year twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six, effective July first, twenty twenty five.
Thank you, Butch. I have a motion to have a second. Thank you, Chris. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Motion passes. Jennifer, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thanks for all you do for Morganton.
Thank you.
Okay. Next on our agenda is consideration for year-end budget amendments, twenty four, twenty five, and budget amendments relating to Hurricane Helene. Sally?
Yes, and ultimately, we're going to need five individual actions that are on the item that was laid before you. So every year, we take a look at our budget at this time of year and see if we need to do any moving around and that sort of thing. We had to do budget amendments are proposed for you in the general fund and the water fund. Both of those, the general fund is dealing with funding for the IBT defense that we're doing through Western Piedmont Council of Governments, reimbursing the capital reserve fund for proceeds from the sale of the four hundred block of Meeting Street, and then amendments that relate to using contingency money that was in the budget and transferring it into the line items where it was directly used. Additional water amendments include utility expenses and some maintenance and repair of generator line items that exceeded what we had originally budgeted, so we need to add more funding into that. Neither of those required additional fund balance to be appropriated. So you'll notice in the budget amendments that we also had increased revenues through interest earnings, through in some additional power bill funding, some cell of surplus, and in water for reimbursement for services, and then again, interest earned on our money. So both of those will ask you to do separately, but with no appropriation of fund balance or our savings. And then Helene. Jesse and I sat through a class last week with the School of Government, and generally accepted accounting principles are requiring that we set up yet another fund for Helene. So we will have two funds. One will be a special revenue fund, and that is what you're enacting tonight, and that is in the amount of nine thousand, I mean, nine million six hundred sixty one thousand one hundred and ninety nine dollars. And that fund is where we will be required to receive any reimbursements, any funding, insurance, the cash flow loan, any FEMA reimbursements, and other type grant monies, or any revenue that we get for that. And then we will have to transfer out of that fund into the Helene Capital Projects Fund, which is where we have to pay for anything that we do. So, and you'll see that that's two and a half million dollar budget amendment, and that is really transferring insurance proceeds.
Okay. What's the wish of council?
Motion to approve a budget amendment in the general fund in the amount of five hundred and seven thousand dollars.
Thank you, Wendy. I have a motion to have a second. Thank you, Chris. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Motion passes. I need a second motion for the water fund.
Make a motion to approve a budget amendment in the water fund in the amount of thirty five thousand two hundred dollars.
Thank you, Chris. I have a motion to have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Butch. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Motion passes. Now I need one for the Helene Special Revenue Fund.
That sounds like me, revenue. I'd like to make a motion to approve budget amendment to establish a Helene Special Revenue Fund in the amount of nine million six hundred sixty one thousand one hundred ninety nine dollars.
Thank you, Butch. I have a motion to have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Chris. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Motion passes. And we need Helene Capital Fund, Project Funds.
I'll make that motion to approve a budget amendment to the Helene Capital Projects Fund in the amount of two million five hundred thirty eight thousand four hundred sixty five dollars.
Thank you, Chris. I have a motion to have a second. Thank you, Wendy. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Motion passes. Okay. I think next on our agenda is consideration of a resolution for the state cash flow loan agreement.
Yeah, do you feel like this is a topic that we talked about before?
Never heard of it.
Yeah, so I guess this is about our third go-round. So also at the June second meeting, you adopted an amendment so that rather than being hampered with the cash flow loans and having to pay that money back immediately after we received it, we could pay it back over the five-year term. The day that we sent our documentation to the state treasurer's office to be able to close that loan, they told us that they had once again amended the amendment and sent us new language. And so that's what this is. This will allow us to close on the loan and to actually receive the money and pay it back in the terms, not the five days or any of that. So I hope this is the last time that we do this.
We appreciate you keeping up with it, because it has been a process. What's the wish of council?
I'll make a motion to approve the proposed amendment to the cash flow loan agreement between the state of North Carolina and the city council of the city of Morganton.
Thank you, Chris. I have a motion to have a second. Sally, do you really think this could be the last, we hope?
I really do think this will be the last one.
Any discussion? All in favor of the motion say aye. Motion passes. Next is award a contract for storm drain repair. Sally?
So this is a project that will use general fund money and CDBG money, some of the money that we just talked about for public infrastructure. And it will happen with the budget that goes into effect July one. We have a storm drain repair that we need to make over in the area of McDowell Street that runs into Bay Street over by Public Safety Headquarters and the old armory. There has been a failure, and we have been working to get that designed. It's approximately five hundred linear feet of storm drain pipe in all the appurtenances that go with it. Seal bids were received by D and D on Thursday, May the twenty ninth, and we received four bids for the project. And after review and checking references, the lowest responsive responsible bid was submitted by Country Boy Landscaping, Inc. of Harmony, North Carolina, in the amount of six hundred twenty nine thousand six hundred forty three dollars and seventeen cents. And you see the bid tab with all four of the bids. They range from that amount up to one point three million for the work. We would recommend awarding the contract to them, and then we have six hundred and fifty thousand dollars included in the budget. When you're in the ground, you don't know what you may run into, so we would like you to approve the additional dollars up to six hundred and fifty thousand as a contingency. Staff will control that and certainly not spend it if everything in the project goes as planned.
What's the wish of council?
I'll make a motion to award a contract with Country Boy Landscaping, Incorporated of Harmony, North Carolina, in the amount of six hundred twenty nine thousand six hundred forty three dollars and seventeen cents, and a contingency of twenty thousand fifty six dollars and eighty three cents to perform the city of Morganton three oh five West Concord Street Storm Drain Replacement Project, and to authorize the mayor and/or city manager to execute such contract and any other necessary documents to include storm drain and temporary construction easements effective July one, twenty twenty five.
Thank you, Chris. I have a motion to have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Butch. Sally, any idea when that will start?
Probably, let's call it mid-July-ish, because obviously, this will kick in July one. We'll have to get the document signed, they'll have to get bonding, and then we'll have to get their mobilization, so.
A lot of traffic problems with this?
I don't think so. So there will probably be some Concord Street closure, so it goes from Concord Street all the way down to McDowell. Probably, there will be some of that at Concord Street. I don't think too much by the time we get around to McDowell, some of that, so.
Any other discussion?
The idea is to get the top part done in the summer while they're not there, but the project will not be complete by then.
Any other discussion? All in favor say aye. Motion passes. Next on our agenda is the award of a contract for replacement HVAC control system at Kama. Sally?
So years ago, we did a capital improvement project where we replaced the old HVAC system and everything at Kama, along with new controls and all of that. And as you all know, the new controls that come with that system basically is a computer. And they have never, quite frankly, worked exactly as they were supposed to, and Tony and Amber and the rest of them have pulled their hair out trying to get it to work properly. The units themselves are in good condition. I really hesitate to say that, because something will go wrong. But we need to replace the control system. And so staff found an option for us to get to do that and recommend that you allow us to contract with Train U.S. Inc. out of Charlotte to replace and upgrade that control system at a cost not to exceed thirty seven thousand seven hundred dollars.
What's the wish of council?
Make a motion. I yield the floor to you.
Motion to award contract for replacement of the existing HVAC control system at Kama to Trans U.S. Incorporated of Charlotte, North Carolina. to Trans U.S. Incorporated of Charlotte, North Carolina, not to exceed $37,700 and to authorize the mayor and/or city manager to execute such contract and any other necessary documents.
Thank you, Wendy. I have a motion to have a second.
I'll second.
Thank you, Chris. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Next is approval to contract with Wildlands Engineering. Sally?
So this relates to Bethel Park? Have you heard about that before?
Hmm.
So this is what I would call the next phase of Bethel Park. And these include third-party inspection services for our bridge installation, project closeout, and then verifying all the compliance with the state and federal permitting, and then helping to close out and report all the grant details. Remember, this is the project that we have five, six grants maybe, all working. So it's a little bit administrative-heavy. Would ask that you allow us to contract with Wildlands Engineering, who have been with us in the design and permitting phase of this, so that that's the most seamless way to finish this out, and would ask that you allow us to contract for $88,130.
What's the wish of council?
Make a motion to award contract to Wildlands Engineering, Incorporated, for $88,130 for inspection and closeout services for Bethel Park Stream Restoration Project.
Thank you, Chris. I have a motion to have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Butch. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Next is consideration to extend the construction agreement for Bethel Park Restoration Project. Am I right, Sally?
Yes. So we are also asking to change our timeline. So obviously, originally, when we did this contract, we anticipated that we would be done. And then Helene hit, and as you know, that created required delays and then more delays in order to get the project completed and to meet all of our, again, permitting and special requirements for that. Would ask that you allow us to amend the contract with Baker Grading and Landscaping to December 31, 2025. Soon as I say it, it won't happen. We feel like we'll be done before then. But that gives us the time with them and us to get it done so that we don't have to keep coming back to you.
What's the wish of council?
I'll make a motion to approve an extension of the construction agreement with Baker Grading and Landscaping to extend the date of completion to December 31, 2025 for the Bethel Park Restoration Project and to authorize the mayor and/or city manager to execute such agreement and any other necessary documents.
Thank you, Butch. I have a motion to have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Chris. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. And next is our annual tree trimming, effective July 1. Sally?
It is, and effective July 1 because these funds are included in the budget that we just passed. It becomes effective July 1. Staff took bids on June 10th and received five bids that were submitted. The bid tab is included in your information. The lowest responsive responsible bidder was Davy Tree Experts Company, and this will be our first time working with them. Brooks verified their references and the type of work that they have done for other communities. And they have quoted a tree trimming crew to us at $134.30 hourly rate. And that is between the time of July 1, '25 to June 30, '26. And we have $225,000 budgeted in the budget you just passed. So we will work them until we get to that amount. If there's time to do more in funding, we would come back to you for any amendments for that.
What's the wish of council?
Make a motion to award contract for annual tree trimming to Davy Tree Experts Company for hourly rate of $134.30 for total work, not to exceed $225,000, and to authorize the mayor and/or the city manager to execute such contract and any other necessary documents.
Thank you, Chris. I have a motion to have a second.
Second.
Thanks, Chris. Any discussion?
Sally, did a lot of local companies who usually apply just not apply because of the work that they're still doing with Helene?
We got several. So the group that got the bid this year applied also, or put in a bid. And then there were two or three others. I feel like we got pretty good participation in our bids. But obviously, everybody is really full. And then some of the local ones, like you see their trucks and things, they did not. They're pretty busy. And they're gonna be that way for a while.
Any other discussion? All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Our next item is a handout, I believe, of a resolution to apply for grant funding for water interconnection. Sally?
Late breaking news. Last Thursday and Friday, we had some conversations with Valdez and the engineering firm of McGill. And there is an opportunity to go after some grant funding through the state. It's federal funding, and it would be in the form of the State Revolving Fund to look at a possible water system interconnection for Morgan and Valdez, and Drexel would be a part of it, too. Looking for more resiliency opportunities in the future if we were to have another storm. This would be one connection we would need to look at. And regionally, we've had quite a few discussions. There will be other ones in the future that we would like to look at with other water systems around. This grant application is due August 1, and it requires a resolution. And we don't have another meeting before then. What I don't have for you right now is details, like exactly location of where this would be and estimated cost. Those will be done between now and when this is due August 1. And we will certainly bring that back to you. It is no doubt that this will be in the tens of millions of dollars, the grant funding that will be sought to do this work.
What's the wish of council?
Make a motion to adopt a resolution authorizing the application for grant fundings from the SRF Funding for Hurricane Helene Program implemented by the American Relief Act 2025.
I have a motion. Have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Chris. Sally, will Drexel and Valdez do similar resolutions?
Yes. Yes. It will be required of everyone. This is actually a grant process that Valdez has taken the lead in and the start in working with McGill. And obviously, because we're close in proximity, looking at a way to create for them another tank, another booster station. And if that can somehow work with our Valdez Avenue Tank, which is our largest tank in our system, then there is benefit to us.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion? Say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Next on our agenda is a Parks and Recreation update. I'll ask Director Brian Fish to please come forward and give us an update. Brian, thanks for being here.
Good evening, council, city manager. And hopefully, just two quick updates unless you have questions. The first one being Bethel Park. Now, we discussed the bridges and the stream restoration, but the playground equipment has been ordered and should be delivered the 1st of August. That includes, like I said, the playground equipment, the shelter, shade structures, benches, all of that. And as soon as it arrives, they will begin installation. They did the same playground installation at Freedom Park, Carbon City Soccer Complex. I could see it taking just a couple of weeks, and they'll have it about ready. The pickleball courts and footsaw courts have been paved. They've started the fence work. There are gonna be eight pickleball courts. I know there was some discussion and questions about how many we'll actually have out there, but there will be eight pickleball courts. And as soon as the, they gotta let the asphalt sit for a few weeks, and then they'll start painting the lines. I won't give away the surprise on the colors and whatnot with the playground. But it should be very nice and look very good at Bethel Park. The other update is about Catawba Meadows. We've opened a few sections previously, and our plan is, hopefully, mid-July, is to open sections of Catawba Meadows Park. Those sections will include the Greenway, section of Greenway from the River Village area down to somewhere around where the Gerora Village is. We've obviously got the Rocky Ford Greenway section that is still in very bad shape, falling into the river. So somewhere between there, and we'll find a spot where we can barricade it off to keep people from going out there. We'll also be able to open the playground. Beanstalk Builders has been working on repairing the playground for several weeks now. They've got one part, I think they're waiting on, that is delayed. Should be here in the next week or two, and then the playground should be completed. The wagon wheel had a lot of work done to it. There was one piece that had to come out. It wasn't compliant anymore. The zip line had come down. So they had several things they had to work on on the playground. The bathrooms need a little work. They'll be ready before. The bathrooms by the playground will be ready by the time we open. We've redone some of the fencing in front of the playground. Previously, it had that knee-high fence. It damaged, had some water damage, some storm damage. And it also sits low, so cars back into it and bust it up all the time. So we're doing a nice tall fence like we have at Carbon City Park. We've yet to hear on Beanstalk if they'll open their zip lines. They weren't able to open since the park was closed, but they were hoping maybe this fall they'll be able to open, at least for a couple of months. The disc golf course will officially open. I know there's been some people out there playing. But it will open as it currently is. But at some point in the near future, we will have to relocate the holes behind the nursery ball field. Will be moved back down into where the original holes were to accommodate the new maintenance shed. But until that point, they'll be able to play the current layout of the disc golf course. The, the community gardens, I don't know if we mentioned, but those will not come back. It's not allowed in our easement down at the parks. So the community gardens, any agricultural work that had been done down there previously will not be allowed. We do want to say the fields will not be used. About the only thing standing down there right now are light poles. So we still have to get that scope figured out, contracted out, and start work hopefully in fall of this year. But the fields will not be accessible. The restrooms by the canteen and the canteen itself will not be open. There's still a lot of work to be done down there. So some of these places, there'll be barricades, there'll be signage. We're gonna put up trespassing signs, and we just ask that the public stay out of those areas. We run into people moving those barricades, running over them, tearing barricades up and signs up. So we just ask that people are aware they're there and just stay out of those areas for their own safety, and...
Mountain Bike Trail.
The Mountain Bike Trail, yes. The Foothills Conservancy has handled the construction of the Mountain Bike Trail. They've got some community cleanup days this month. They're working on signage for the Mountain Bike Trail. And we will open it at the same time, is the plan. It will be accessible from the Greenway behind the softball fields, so you can come down and you can cut in. Obviously, there'll be signage. They run in behind the softball, baseball fields, all the way up to the Rocky Ford Greenway access. The plan is to open that parking lot and so they can access the advanced section, the Mountain Bike Trail. We will keep, obviously, the Greenway section there, barricaded off the best we can. That's the most dangerous part of the Greenway, or any of our parks really that exist right now, is that Greenway section. But the Mountain Bike Trail will be completed and open so that it can be enjoyed and used. I recommend any of you that ride bikes, come on out to the advanced section and take a ride.
Walk a little bit of it, that was enough.
Yeah.
Didn't seem real advanced.
Walking it was hard enough.
Yeah.
So yeah, that's where we're at. We've worked real hard. We continue to work on some of these areas. The outdoor volleyball courts there should be ready. We have adult volleyball season that we play in the summer. So it should be good to see people back in the park and that they're supposed to be there. So the shelters be available for renting, and we should be good to go. It's obviously, I said, the fields. Some people who have not been down there looks completely different with no dugouts or fencing. So that may be a bit of a shock, but the front part of the park should be enjoyed.
Brian, thanks.
This should open up the Greenway downtown connector. So this would make the downtown Greenway connector usable through the disc golf course and to hit that section of Greenway.
Yes.
Brian, how about the section behind Ingalls along the soccer field from the pump station out? Is that back open, or is that gonna stay closed?
That has been, that has been open, coming around behind Fields 5 and 6.
Yeah.
Unless they're doing work on the pump station that's blocking access, but that section has been open.
Which is sporadic. That's not all the time.
Yeah.
The biggest thing is you won't be able to cross the bridge to get over to River Village. It's, we still, obviously, the boardwalk and some other things we've gotta do out that way.
So the boardwalk's been taken down?
The boardwalk is completely removed, and we're in the engineering phase currently to get designs for what will go back.
Okay.
Brian, we know your department's worked hard to get this done, and we're pleased that you're moving at that pace. So thank you so much for all you do.
I just wanna thank the guys, the maintenance guys. They're in it every day, and they've done a good job. And a lot of it's been done with less equipment than we normally have. You know, we're borrowing. We've got Michael Chapman of Public Works coming out and helping us out, but they've stayed busy and done a good job.
And they've continued to work on the TGI Friday, every Friday, to get all that set up, too.
Yes, along with everything.
Along with Michael's crew afterwards, so thank you both for that.
Correct.
Brian, thanks so much.
Thank you.
May I say one thing before we adjourn?
Yes.
So the other thing that I will say, not on the agenda, but this afternoon at 3:30 in this very room, we had a wonderful swearing-in ceremony where we swore in Chief Lander. And it was great. We had lots of folks from Public Safety, obviously, retired folks from Public Safety, off-duty and on-duty, and other city folks that were here, community, representatives, family members, and about eight other communities sent folks to show their support and their level of respect for Ryan. So we are really excited about that.
Absolutely. And right after, got to see the newest addition, the new fire truck.
Yes.
Oh, yes. And at 5 o'clock, we got to see the new fire truck. So this is the, not the latest one we ordered, but the previous one. We ordered this fire truck in August of 2022, and we just now have it. But it's pretty nice-looking, and we got to see that, so thank you.
Anything else to come before council? Everybody had a great 4th of July. We adjourned.